The two P M session of Roanoke City Council for September the twentieth is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the row.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and a quorum is present. To this afternoon, our invocation will be delivered by the Reverend Elizabeth Link, pastor of the Second Presbyterian Church here at Roanoke. Pastor, welcome and thank you. And following her invocation, I will lead you in the prayers of allegiance. Let's stand now as Pastor Link will lead us in our invocation.
Join your hearts with me in prayer. Holy One, we gather today yearning to be and do what is right and what is good. We come as ordinary people, seeking to find the way, trusting that you will illumine hearts and minds. We pray, Lord, that you would shine your light and look with favor upon our city. Guide our city council members, sustain them in their work, support them in their anxieties, and strengthen them in their resolve to seek and pursue the well-being of all the people. Grant them your wisdom, bless their business and work together with patience, compassion, and understanding, and grant to them the strength to discern and carry forth your will. May you instruct us in our daily walk, Lord, to bless this place, Roanoke, that we call home. Amen.
Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Link. Welcome, everybody, to our second session or the second meeting this month for Roanoke City Council. Let me advise you that today's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on R V T V Channel Three on Thursday, September the twenty-third at seven o'clock P M and Saturday, September the twenty-fifth at four o'clock P M, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. The announcements, the Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and or upcoming expiration of terms of office. The Roanoke Civic Center Commission, one vacancy. The Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee, one vacancy. The Touring Advisory Board, one vacancy, and that vacancy will be a citizen at large. For any of these vacancies, you can access the city's homepage to complete an online application, you can call the clerk's office. But we, as a council, want you, want to encourage you to come forward and be a part of boards and commissions as you help us govern this city. So, and it's an easy process to submit the application, again, online or call the clerk's office for assistance, and we look forward to receiving your applications. All right, presentations and acknowledgements, we have none to date, and a hearing of citizens upon public matters. And you all are aware that whoever wants to speak should have signed up and given that to the clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers signed up today?
We have one speaker.
Okay.
Cam Terry.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Cam Terry. I'm a vegetable farmer here in Roanoke City. I grow thirty different kinds of vegetables in backyards throughout Roanoke City, and we sell at a handful of farmers' markets and to some of your favorite restaurants here in town. My business is called Garden Variety Harvest, and I moved here to Roanoke four years ago in order to start this business. I wanted to farm, I had no land, but I had some generous in-laws who offered to let me start the business in their backyard, and they lived here in Roanoke. So, this is where we ended up, and it seems quite fortuitous to me. Many agriculture businesses have failed by this age, you know, four years in. Farming is not easy, and farming profitably is fickle. But I'm currently planning a significant expansion of my farm over the next two years, and I owe so much of my success to Leap for Local Food. For over a decade, Leap has been working to make healthy affordable, healthy food affordable and accessible to Roanoker's, and they help growers like me get paid to put food on plates in, in our own community. They help us get paid a fair price for our products. And in response to COVID nineteen, Leap did not close markets. There were shortages at Kroger, but not at the Grandin Village Farmers Markets, where you can find me every week. In fact, the Leap Farm Share nearly doubled in 2020. People were striving for healthy food, and this organization answered the bell, and that's what resiliency in the food system looks like to me. Leap is, in my opinion, deserving of American Rescue Plan funding because their person, their proposal paints a picture of a food system that will continue to bear fruit in this community for decades. These projects are shovel-ready, and they will start feeding people immediately. And so today, I'm just here to advocate for my favorite local food organization as we consider these American Rescue Plan funds. I encourage the council to fully fund Leap's proposal because it's a lasting investment in our local food system. Thank you very much.
Let me ask you something. Where, where are your gardens?
Mostly in southeast Roanoke right now. So, the, the home base of the farm is in Garden City. That's where my in-laws, who I mentioned, live, and, and that's where we do all the washing and packing of all our vegetables there, and we have a garden there. But I have four other parcels in, in backyards, and I pay my rent to my landowners in vegetables. I basically sell them a share in a C S A in exchange for being able to use their space. And for me, you know, I, I didn't have much of a choice, right? If, if I was going to begin a career in farming, it was going to be on the backs of a community who was ready to support my business, right? And so, I'm grateful that, that Roanoke has given me this opportunity and that there was an organization kind of doing that work ahead of me to make it so that my business could be profitable.
Okay, and what's that organization's name again?
Leap for Local Food.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's all who've signed up to speak. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by members of City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. All right, I do want to call your attention, council, to two requests for closed meetings from the city manager, that, to discuss the disposition of city-owned property located at twenty-nine Campbell Avenue Southwest, and to discuss the acquisition of real property, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section two point seven dash thirty-seven eleven Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. All right, I need a motion for the Consent Agenda.
Move to the Consent Agenda.
Second. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
I am, the Consent Agenda is approved. Now we're moving to our regular agenda. Item number five of the public hearings, we have none this afternoon, petitions and communications, none. And item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. And so at this point in time, I will call on our city manager to introduce the briefing to us.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and there is one briefing today, but one hopefully very important briefing, which is the report coming to you from the Star City Strong Recovery and Resiliency Advisory Panel and their recommendations regarding the American Rescue Plan Act. Each of you received, of course, a copy of that report last week attached to the, the weekly update, and so hopefully you've had a chance to review it. So I will be providing just kind of an overview and, of course, focus predominantly on the, the recommendations as, as they present, as they are presented in the, in the information that you have been provided. A little bit of context before I get started, of course, you all know this is really the second version of this. The first, of course, came with the CARES Act and the funding that we received through that, and that, similarly, those recommendations by a task force were presented to you back in July of 2020. So, I want to set some, some context here. So in July of 2020, when that information was delivered to you, there were four million positive COVID cases in the U.S., four million. As we deliver this to you today, there are thirty-nine million positive COVID cases in the U.S. There were eight hundred and nine cases of COVID, at least eight hundred and nine cases of COVID here in the Roanoke area, and of course, today, there are more than ten thousand cases in the city of Roanoke alone. There were, at the time the CARES report was delivered to you in July 2020, one hundred and forty-two thousand people had died as a result of COVID, and of course, today, there are over seven, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand deaths associated with that. That is, as has been exhibited, has been highlighted in the news recently, one in every five hundred residents in the, in the country. There were in July, when we delivered, twenty-four deaths in our region. Today, there are over five hundred deaths in our region attributed to COVID. So, just to give a sense, just in that one-year timeframe, how much has taken place, and that's just the human toll, of course. We have, throughout this, also talked about the economic and social and educational tolls as well, but I just wanted to, to set that context. I also want to have some acknowledgements and thanks for the work that was done on this. I certainly want to acknowledge the mayor and vice mayor, who served as co-chairs for this effort. Also want to thank Angie O'Brien in my office, who did most of the behind-the-scenes work, and actually, her real work is about, about to happen because she will lead the effort in implementation of the initiatives that will be coming forward. And there's a whole group of other folks inside the city organization, the city attorney's office, as well as our finance department and others that will be involved, have already been involved, and will be involved as we move forward. And of course, most importantly, I want to thank the members of the advisory panel. You all appointed thirty-six individuals, some of whom are behind me in this room, who met seven times, including a public hearing. So they dedicated basically their Wednesday evenings from the end of July all the way through August and the first Wednesday in September, doing this work. And as was the case with the CARES Act, almost without exception, pretty much everybody attended and everyone participated in those meetings, and certainly want to thank them and their efforts and their seriousness with which they took on this task as we went forward. So as you all know, this effort is to determine how best to allocate sixty-four point five million dollars, which we have received through the American Rescue Plan Act from the federal government, and in an effort to assist in that, you all in July convened a series, and actually, each of you led a series, of focus group meetings, which involved well over a hundred individuals, as well as stakeholder interviews. Then in July, you formed the advisory panel. That advisory panel, as I said, met the first time in July twenty-eighth. Their efforts included two other ways in which to outreach to folks. One of those was a community survey, in which more than two hundred individuals responded to that survey, and then a public hearing, and the public hearing, of course, was held at Burgland, where they were meeting, where over a hundred individuals attended, and about thirty-four, thirty-five folks actually provided testimony or provided information at that public hearing. So, they combined all of that information together as, as they prepared, as they went about their business, and then certainly as they prepared their, their recommendations. Throughout this process, we have focused in on three different, and when I say this process, meaning going all the way back to the CARES Act itself, we have focused on three different stages through, through our efforts in responding to, to COVID. The first is response, and so the majority of the early part of this was really responding, our partnership with other local jurisdictions, certainly with the Department of Health, with Coralian Clinic, and a whole host of others, and really just simply responding, getting testing done, contact tracing, ultimately vaccinations, getting our workplaces prepared to continue to safely provide services to the community and so on. The second phase, or second stage, has been recovery, and that started with the CARES Act, and that included grants to small businesses, it included assistance to homeowners for things like utility bills, it included grants to our arts groups and others, and many, many other activities, as we deployed nearly sixteen million dollars of CARES Act funding. And then the third stage is one in which we are just beginning to embark on. You actually heard it from the previous speaker, which is this resiliency notion, which is how we can not only recover from COVID, not with the intention of returning to where we were pre-COVID, but actually, can we prepare our individuals, our households, our businesses, and our neighborhoods, and therefore our community, to be even more resistant or more resilient to these kinds of shocks, should they occur into the future? And so those have been the three stages that we have used through this entire process. In this effort, we actually also referred to a particular approach or a vision that was in place as we proceeded, and I'll get to that in just a second. I want to kind of walk through the process a little bit, so let me get to that section. So as I mentioned, the process included those stakeholder interviews, as well as focus group meetings, of course, the work of the, the panel, the public hearing, and there was specifically a goal, and you see it at the top of this page, that kind of arrived out of that effort, and that was that we will transform our community as we support recovery from COVID nineteen and help residents, households, businesses, neighborhoods, and thus the community, to be more resilient against similar disruptions in the future. So that was the goal that led these efforts and, and I think form the, the foundation of the recommendations that were made. We also, throughout this process, did all of the discussions and actions around a set of principles that you see at the bottom of the page on the screen, which is that these, this efforts, these recommendations will, will obviously comply with the act, being the American Rescue Plan Act, and Treasury guidance as it evolves. It will further cities' objectives, as stated in the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, and other adopted policies. It will address known disparities and promote equity and inclusion. It will have outcomes that are achievable within a, with a single investment, and therefore not requiring recurring expenses, unless there have been ways that have been identified that those recurring expenses will be covered beyond what, what we may be required to bring, either through the American Rescue Plan Act or other budgetary purposes. And it will leverage other available funds, programs, and initiatives, avoiding duplication where possible, and then finally have the potential for transformational change. So with those principles in mind, the, and that goal, the recommendations ended up, from the panel, in three, three areas, all three of those areas heading toward a, a set of objectives in mind. The three areas that they chose to focus on making investments were in people, places, and governance, and each of those sustaining, enhancing, and enhancing prosperity and health and well-being for all. So when we go into these investments and the recommendations, you'll see those in those three buckets, in people, places, and governance. What we've, as I mentioned earlier, there's sixty-four point five million coming to us, and of course, as you all know, in May, we received the first half of those funds, so we currently have a little over thirty-two million dollars that are here in our community, sitting, sitting in the bank, ready to be spent, and the other half is expected to be received in May of next year. So what the group ultimately chose to do was to make recommendations for about three-fourths of that total funding. The, the reason for that was to be able to look far enough into those dollars to be really transformational, and at the same time, hold back dollars so that it can, we can kind of monitor how things are going, both with the initiatives that are being invested in, as well as how things are going with COVID, because as we have just experienced and are still experiencing with the Delta variant, we don't know yet what lies ahead relative to COVID and what additional expenses may, may be incurred. So as a result, out of that sixty-four point five million, a little over forty-eight million dollars is what is essentially addressed in these recommendations as we go forward. I also want to add at this point, and then you all know this because we've shared this before, but I want to reinforce this point, which is, one of the ways that the act this time differed from the CARES Act is that it provided funding directly to localities to make up for lost revenue. In the CARES Act, we could only use the funds that we received ourselves for things like P P E or overtime for public safety employees or those types of things. We could not use it for revenue that was lost. And you may remember, when we approved our budget, that included, of last year, that included a nine million dollar reduction in the budget, which meant we fore, we were foregoing capital projects, we actually furloughed employees and, and other steps that were taken in order to balance the budget. This act allows us to account for that lost revenue and be able to actually put it back into our general fund. The first year, I'll give you an example, the first year using the formula that was provided, we could account for twenty-four, a little over twenty-four million dollars of lost revenue. Now you all know that the current budget we're in was balanced, not accounting for any of these lost revenue dollars. What that means is we're able to deliver all of the services that we seek to deliver, we're able to actually invest in the capital projects that have been approved through the budget and do so without relying on any of these Rescue Act funds. That allows us to actually maximize the benefit of these funds out in the community. There are other places, I've named a few of them, some of them are very large cities, Cincinnati is one, I believe Philadelphia is another one, where probably two-thirds or more of their allotments are going simply to shore up their budget, that they've taken that big of a hit in their local economy and their local tax revenue, that they're simply plowing that back into tax revenue and using it for just the day-to-day business associated with it. That, that's a different approach than we have had to take here because of, frankly, how strong our economy has proven, and how resilient it has proven, but also because of the steps that you all took in the approval of your budget. So out of that roughly forty-eight million dollars that's identified in here, fifteen percent of it is dedicated, recommended to be dedicated to the governance investments. So remember, I said there are those three buckets, people, places, and governance. So fifteen percent to governance, meaning the remaining eighty-five percent goes into one of those two buckets of people and places. And again, as we get a little bit further into this, I'll be able to explain more about what goes inside each of those, each of those buckets. But that basically equates to eight point two million roughly for, let me back up. In addition to that division that I just mentioned, there is a further subdivision for recovery projects. Think of those as the immediate needs in the community that need attention now, and the resiliency projects. Those are the longer-term sort of transformational projects. So when you set aside the money that was provided for governance, what that does is that provides for those two buckets of people and places, a little over eight million dollars to go to those immediate recovery projects, and almost thirty-three million dollars to go toward those projects that are those longer-term resiliency investments. It is also further recommended that the one-fourth, or the sixteen million dollars that is not accounted for in here, be programmed concurrent with the development of your F Y twenty-three budget. So as we go through the development of our F Y twenty-three budget, which of course, we will begin with your retreat in November, we'll start looking at the way in which to use those remaining dollars as that budget gets developed as we move forward. Keeping in mind, again, remember, we have only at our disposal right now thirty-two million dollars anyway, because the rest of the funds will not come until next May. So that is sort of how the big picture of the funding is, is identified. It is also noted in the report and was in the discussion with the panel as well, the significance of acknowledging the linkages between equity, health, and wellness outcomes, economic opportunity, and resiliency. So you'll see in these recommendations that are provided, they're intended to reinforce one another. There really aren't any recommendations that you would say stand on their own and don't relate to one another or one of the other recommendations, and that's by design so that we get the full benefit of each of those, but also the transformational benefit of those working in tandem with one another. So let me move to the recommendations. So again, we've got these divided up into people, places, and governance. The objective for people is to ensure that no one in our community lacks the essentials of shelter, food, and personal safety, provide opportunities for residents of all ages, ability levels, and backgrounds to engage fully in civic, economic, and social life. So that's the objective here as the community responds to the impacts of COVID. And as you look further down on that, on that page, you'll see what I was referring to as the recovery investments, those are those immediate needs, and the resiliency investments. I will say on the recovery investments, these are still presented somewhat as illustrations. They are projects that we certainly believe are appropriate and worthy of investments, but we also recognize there may be others under that list as well that we'll continue to refine as we go about through this process. In this case, for people, the recommendation is that no more than two point five million dollars go toward the recovery investments for the people category. These would be for things like continued support of mitigation measures such as vaccination, P P E, testing, tracing. This is our share of those activities. Obviously, most of those activities are provided by the Department of Health, but there are a few things that we've been doing, for example, our bilingual outreach efforts, which are being done on, by us, so that it would go towards some of those kinds of projects. Another is household financial support, so think of individual homeowners or renters or just residents in our community who need assistance with rental assistance, mortgage assistance, unpaid bills, those types of things. That would be another one that could fall under this. And then mental health and substance addiction treatment and recovery services. So if you recall, not very long ago, we actually had a presentation by the collective response of the uptick of substance use associated with COVID and the unmet mental health needs still in our community. This could be used for some of those funding activities. So that's the, the recovery category. The resiliency category is a little more specific. So these are specifically the recommendations coming from the panel, and we've referred to these through the process as big lifts, the reason being is, as you'll see as we go through these, these are substantial. I mean, these are both substantial investments and have the potential to be substantial benefit and transformation in the, in the community. These are presented in order, so these are in rank order, the way in which the, the panel has recommended these. And of course, anyone that was in attendance at the meetings or watching the meetings know that behind these nine projects that I'm going to go through, between the two, there were probably another twenty projects. So it isn't as if there wasn't a big lift. So it isn't as if there wasn't a big list they were working from that they got down to this list. The first one on this list deals with workforce skills and development, and this is essentially dealing with workforce development, retraining skills. These are for folks who either have lost their jobs because of COVID, think of folks that are in the hospitality industry, for example, that were out of work for a long time, may still be out of work, or they're for folks that are actually finding themselves underemployed as a result. Either they may be employed, maybe they took a job as a driver, a delivery driver, where before they had worked in a restaurant that no longer is in business or isn't being hired or, or what have you, and for youth. So these are intended to be ways in which they are connected, those individuals are connected to opportunities for additional skills development and training, so that they can tap into the jobs that we have in our community that are both growing and more resilient to these, these types of shocks. And I'm going to come back in each of these and, and explain something that's not in your document, which is ultimately what we may consider for individual dollar amounts, because you see this whole category is basically saying not less than $10 million, but I'll come back to those individually, because the advisory panel intentionally did not identify how much for each of these individual items, though they certainly talked about what they could be, and I'll share that with you all as we go through this at the end. The second investment deals with enhanced mobility. So these were items such as accelerating the delivery of transit shelters, sidewalks between our highest-use transit stops, for example, and high-density, either high-density residential areas or destinations, so that there was accessible, there were more accessible routes to and from those high-use bus stops. It may also include things like demonstration routes, so this could be routes that go outside of our jurisdiction for a limited period of time. They could be routes that we say in a particular area, if we could actually put more buses on a route inside the city, maybe instead of it being an hour between buses, it's a half hour between buses. The reason they're demonstration is because, remember, this is one-time money, so basically it would fund for the two-to-three-year timeframe that we, that we have, and at that point, either it would prove itself and therefore secure funding from others, or it would cease at that point. That's the second one. The third one deals with violence interruption initiatives. So these are a continuation and expansion of the anti-violence activities that are currently underway with the City of Roanoke Police Department, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, and others. This could include other funding tied with law enforcement, violence interruption, anti-gang activities, prevention efforts, and, and so on, with a particular focus on youth out of, out of that recommendation. The fourth recommendation on this one deals with the food systems, Food Hub. This is an enhancement of the current food access programs in our community, including an expansion of existing food hubs, the urban agricultural network, expanded farmers markets, expansion of financial incentives, and so on. This goes back to the issue, if you remember, at the peak of kind of COVID, really the access to food of any type. We saw increased demands on all of our food pantries, as well as on the food, the, the farmers markets and other, other types of things. So this is, again, to expand that footprint. And then the fifth and final recommendation is a leadership development initiative, particularly for the Northwest and Southeast. I think each of you know that every three years, there is a community health needs assessment that's performed in this community that identifies the, just that, the health needs assessments in our neighborhoods, particularly the neighborhoods that are the most impoverished or medically underserved, in this case, Northwest and Southeast. And in there, there's a whole list of interventions that ought to be put into place. One great example of that is the, the lift clinic that is under construction at Fallon Park School, Fallon School. That is one of those interventions to try to get healthcare closer to where the residents are and remove some of those barriers. This is a dual effort in that it would help fund some of those interventions, and it would equip the residents in these two neighborhoods to have greater capacity to actually drive those conversations, more so than simply be recipients of the services that others are providing. So this is both a leadership development or capacity building effort combined with trying to advance on those health, health disparity initiatives that are in there as well. Let me give you some quick numbers attached to this, and then I'm going to jump into places, and then we'll come back and take questions. So as I mentioned, what you have from the panel is that they recommend no less than $10 million go toward those five initiatives that I just described. During the discussion, and I will tell you kind of what was ascribed to each of these individually, so each of those lifts individually. So that first one, the skills development was, we had talked about $3 million going toward that initiative. Mobility, same thing, $3 million to that initiative. Violence interruption, same thing, $3 million. The food systems hub, $2.5 million, and this, the leadership development one was $1 million. That's a total of $12.5 million. Again, the panel did not make those individual recommendations, those were just the discussions that we had through that, and I think ultimately, the idea was that we would come and present those individual dollar amounts to you for, for your consideration or discussion as, as we went on. So let me transition to places, and then again, we'll come back and answer any questions that you have. Under places, the objective is to support stabilization and continued vitality of neighborhoods, nurturing complete neighborhoods and neighborhood centers along with downtown and, and the city's business districts and the small businesses located within. On the recovery side, so again, these are those immediate items, the recommendation is that no more than $1.5 million be spent in this category. These would include, again, small business grants, nonprofit grants, and arts and culture grants, and maybe other things as well. Each of those three items are items that we use the CARES Act for as well, and in a couple of those instances, in particular, small business, there has been a fairly significant federal focus on those areas as well, but those are at least three of the recovery projects that are identified. On the resiliency side, you'll note a significant increase in the amount of funding here that is recommended by the panel in places over the category of people. So in this case, they're recommending no less than $27 million be spent associated with these four big lifts or these four resiliency investments. These again are presented in rank order. So the first one is the Northwest Community Hub anchored by a grocer. So this is the, it is a public-private initiative, which would serve as a community hub located in the Melrose area, ideally anchored by a grocery store, as well as other retail outlets such as a micro-retail project restaurant, those types of things, and may include nonprofit uses such as a community health clinic. This would be an initiative, as I said, as a public-private. Obviously, the city is not in the business of developing or operating grocery stores or retail outlets, so this is going to be dependent upon a partnership with the city bringing incentives and other partners with private partners coming in and doing that. And again, at the end, we'll talk a little bit about some of the timing associated with that, because that particularly affects this project, because it's a large-scale undertaking, but that, that is number one. Number two is affordable, accessible, and safe housing. This would run the full spectrum of acquisition and rehabilitation of properties ranging from supportive housing for those transitioning out of a homeless situation to homes that are being rehabilitated, that are currently owner or renter occupied, all the way to new construction. This is also envisioned to include a component that actually trains, again, those folks that are unemployed or underemployed or youth in doing those activities, so actually getting that experience as well as credentials or certifications that come with that, so that at the end of this, not only do you end up with homes that are rehabilitated, new homes that have been constructed, housing for transitionary opportunities, but you also end up with a workforce that actually is equipped to then use those skills in other instances. This would also similarly involve, obviously, a lot of partners, ranging from nonprofit partners to other partners. It will no doubt include your land bank with, with TAP, because that is a significant component of this effort among others. The third investment is a, is a recreation center, most likely, it says on here Eureka or Preston, most likely Eureka. This is actually complete reconstruction redevelopment of that recreation center, and would of course include, as you would expect in a contemporary recreation center, opportunities for indoor recreation activities, as well as learning and meeting space, and other areas, both inside the building and potentially outside the building, for active and passive recreation. These facilities, being the recreation centers, as I think each of you know, ranked the highest in need among all of the other projects the city has in its Parks and Recreation Master Plan that you all adopted a little over a year ago. Some of the funding for these activities are already in your approved CIP, so investment in this area would actually allow us to do even more. It would allow us to potentially move into, for example, replacing the second highest priority, which is one of our swimming pools, and, and again, we'll talk about that toward the end. But that was the third. And then the fourth investment is a Gainsborough Neighborhood Hub. This is an initiative that is a, similarly, a public-private partnership, resulting in the development of a community hub within the Gainsborough Neighborhood in proximity to Gainsborough Road and Gilmer Avenue. A little bit different than the other hub, where the other hub is focused around access to a grocery store and retail and some nonprofit kind of support services. This one is really geared toward entrepreneurship, business training, small business training, particularly minority-owned businesses, as well as business support services, and a health clinic component as well. So this, again, would be a similar kind of investment that would require, obviously, partnerships with many of our community partners to actually pull off. So those are the four lifts, so let me tell you the dollars that have been discussed through the process associated with each of these. The Northwest Grocery Store Community Hub was a $10 million investment. The affordable, accessible, and safe housing, $4 million. The recreation center, $8 million, and the Gainsborough Neighborhood Hub, $5 million. And that totals $27 million, and if you take the 27 and the 12.5, you arrive at $39.5 million as the investments for those, those areas. The last section, and I will not spend much time in this section because, well frankly, because this is somewhat the boring section, but the, this is the governance section. It's important, because it's important because it's what we do, it's what you all do on a daily basis, but the objective here is to support the continuity of government operations and the safety of municipal workers and the general public, help equip the next generation of leaders, and enhance the capacity of those already serving in such roles, enhance awareness of and access to COVID recovery assistance to individuals, households, businesses, and organizations, and neighborhoods. The recovery investments are, so these are really expenditures that we would expend on ourselves, on what it is that we do, on the services that we, we deliver, and you'll notice in this one, we do not have the same breakout between resiliency and recovery as we did in the other categories, and that's because this one is really dependent on the response to COVID as we go through, so we did not do that. We have a total, there is a total amount, that 15% that goes into this, but it will go both to recovery and resiliency investments. So the recovery investments can include reinvestment in capital maintenance items due to lost, I mentioned earlier that we lost revenue, so let me use an example. Our parking operations, which you all know are independent, they are enterprise operations, meaning the people that use that facility pay for those facilities. The reality, of course, during COVID, not many people use those facilities, and therefore the revenue reductions in those areas was substantial, and as a result, we're having to defer capital maintenance items within our garages, which is not wise use of our money in those investments. We could use some of these dollars to actually invest in capital maintenance for those projects. It may include technology, heating, cooling upgrades, continued vaccine outreach, PPE. We've talked about Wi-Fi hotspots at municipally-owned facilities, so think about hotspots at like certain parks or, or those kinds of things, so that folks would be able to access Wi-Fi, tourism marketing conference supports. Those are some of the recovery investments. On the resiliency side, these focus more on helping provide resources for businesses in their disaster planning. Obviously, we as a city do a significant amount of disaster planning through our emergency operations. A lot of businesses don't do that, and this would be a way in which to bring some of that expertise, either from us locally or from FEMA or other resources to aid in that, in that particular effort. Capacity building, as I mentioned previously, is helping build initiative for implementation partners, which I'll talk about at the very end of this, ways in which we can help financially support some of our partners to increase their capacity to help achieve additional objectives that you all have established, and again, I'll talk about that at the very end. And we have a lot of reporting and administrative responsibilities with this. We obviously don't take lightly that this is a significant amount of funding that the taxpayers of our country have entrusted us with, and so therefore, we should be able to demonstrate outcomes as well as obvious financial tracking through this, through this effort, and obviously, that will cost funding as well. And there could be infrastructure projects that are available under this funding as well. So again, that's just, under the governance, it's just that 15% piece. The very last piece I'll mention, then open up for questions, and at the end of that, I'll talk about next steps. As I mentioned, under that capacity building, some other considerations. So this is another opportunity the advisory panel believes that we should undertake, which is not only are these investments designed to reinforce one another, so that we maximize the benefit of these investments, but again, it does represent undoubtedly the most significant investment in these categories that I just mentioned, probably ever, by the, the city government, and so it also allows an opportunity to ensure that those that are receiving those investments also further other objectives that you all have stated in your adopted policies. So these are things like ensuring that as these are developed, there are, there's involvement down at the grassroots level, so that the people who are being served have a greater role in defining how that service is delivered, and that they themselves have that capacity built as they go along, that these be coordinated, so that they're plugged into the overall community infrastructure, again, so that we're breaking down any of those remaining silos that may exist. They are neighborhood or placed-based, meaning they're not shotgun-scattered, that they're focused in areas, much like we focus our CDBG funding, so that they have the maximum benefit, and that the programming is trauma-informed. So the intent is not just to say, these things are things we would hope that the folks that receive money do. What we would actually do under some of that governance funding is actually provide the resources necessary to equip each of those recipients of these dollars to be able to receive the appropriate and necessary training as they move through this, this process. So that's what that capacity building one relates to as well. And then the final part of this is, again, as I mentioned, you know, we should be doing this for a reason, so we need to clearly identify upfront what the anticipated outcomes are, and then report back how those outcomes are being delivered through this process. Some of these investments are very large, for example, the Northwest Hub, and very complicated, and so a part of those outcomes will be establishing a timeline that includes decision points along the way, so that if for some reason, we hit a benchmark, or we hit a date of a benchmark, and we have not achieved that benchmark, there's some decisions that have to be made. The most important reason for that is because these dollars all have to be spent within a few years, and what we don't want to do is go so far into a project that just is not going to happen, to the point at which now we find ourselves with funding that still needs to be spent, but not much time to spend it. So a part of this will be defining those timelines, as well again, as those outcomes that are expected to be achieved by these investments. So with that, I'm going to pause and ask what questions you might have about this. Certainly, there are panel members here as well that I know would be more than happy to come up and share with you kind of their thinking or answer any questions that you might have as well, and then when we're done with Q and A, I'll come back and talk about next steps in this process. But at this point, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Carr. I'm going to start on my left and just come across the back to see what questions or concerns or thoughts you may have, starting with Ms. Angel.
Oh, I don't have, do not have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Well, I have questions, but I don't know where to start, actually. That was 18 pages worth to read, and so I've got a lot going on here, and I've made notes. For one question I do have, and I believe you, you attempted to answer it at the end, was what I call the backup plan. When you get into spending the money and you find that what, what you were working on, such as the hub, let's say for example, Gainsborough, if that is not coming into fruition, at what point do you look at stop the bleeding and, and will you be using any of the panel of the members to help make those decisions?
The, I'll answer this latter part first, possibly, because we've got to think through how that, how, how we would make those decisions about the timeline, and I'll use the Northwest Hub one as, as an example, because I think it's probably one of the most relevant examples, but, so what we'll need to do is we'll need to define at what point do certain things, like so for example, in this case, it's going to require the securing a private developer and a private operator associated with a grocery store, so we want to provide adequate time to see if we can make that happen, but not too much time. And so if we identify what that timeline is... that timeline is, and we reach that benchmark, and we've achieved that, great, then we move on to whatever the next benchmark is. If we have not, then there is a decision point at that point to make. That decision point may actually not be, okay, this project's not going to happen, so let's just use the money someplace else. It might be, we can't secure an operator, and we can't secure a developer for this, but maybe we could secure a developer for, that would provide the health clinic, for example, or the retail piece, but not the grocery store piece. There'll be another decision point with that, because if that doesn't, look, I guess it's going to work, then you would have the next decision point, which is, okay, is it worth actually proceeding and going forward? There's a couple of the projects I think will fall into that kind of category. I think the Gainsborough Hub will be the same way. There's some benchmarks that I think you need to hit on that in order to keep that progressing, because they're so big. Most of the other ones, I think, are going to be more about deliverables than it will be decision points, because I think all of, most of the other ones, I believe, are either things that we've already had similar partnerships, or we have very strong partners we can engage with that will make those projects happen. But there are a few of those that will require that kind of checkpoint along the way. The reason I answered the first part somewhat differently is because time is of the essence here, we're going to have to figure out how we establish those benchmarks and those decision points as quickly as we possibly can. And so trying to figure out the most efficient way to do that is what we'll have to figure out as we go forward. And that may indeed involve some part of the panel. It may, it may not. I don't know until we get a little bit further into it.
Okay. Thank you. You've answered it.
Sure.
First of all, I want to thank the advisory panel for really putting in the time and effort to come up with this plan. A couple of questions. One, regarding the food desert concept, we mentioned, we talked about a grocery store, but we've talked about it in our retreat too as well, that there's possible, if that doesn't, don't have a private partner, are we still, I mean, the main issue was really talking about fresh produce and fresh foods in the Northwest area. Is there other options that on the table that if we cannot find a private partner to come in and do a full grocery store, that we can maybe do open-market store or something like that?
That could be kind of that decision point that I was just mentioning to Councilmember Moon Reynolds, is, one of those decision points could be if, again, you reach that benchmark and you find that a grocery is not happening, then is it appropriate, then the next transition is, what if we could actually make this a, you know, ongoing farmer's market, for example, I'm just using that as an example. And is that sufficient to address the access to food issue, at least to the extent it's possible at that moment in time, and going through that process? So that may indeed be a part of sort of that decision-making process as we go, as we go forward. I think, you know, what we've got to do is, I like describing it as Plan B, because Plan A is make this thing happen as it was recommended. And that will be the full, that will be the full press to try to make that happen. Plan B, I think, is just good planning, because there is the possibility it might not. And then trying to figure out, if you can't get that, then how do you get as close to that as you can in light of what those constraints are? And I think one of those options is what you've laid out.
And then regarding the Gainsborough area, first of all, I like, I love the idea to create that entrepreneur hub. Is it going to be kind of like in the same line of the collab that we have in Raleigh Court?
Yeah, I think the example that we've used through the discussion with the advisory panel is, if you took the concept of the collab and the concept of ramp, and you actually combined them together with an emphasis on small minority-owned businesses, that's really kind of at its core what this would represent, along with the other component, which is the health clinic component. But yes, yes, that would be a good way, I think, of thinking through. And it would cover small businesses looking to grow, it would cover entrepreneurs looking to start new businesses, and it would include individuals who just want to get some additional back office support for the businesses that they actually are already conducting.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll just take a moment to thank most of the panel that, I mean, all of the panel that participated, because it was really a big project. And we had to narrow it down. We had some really, really good ideas, and it was a lot of work. And they took their time out of their busy schedules to come in and help us do that. And I know that this council has a lot even to digest, but if it weren't for this panel, we'd have a whole lot more to digest. And these are just ideas and concepts, and they certainly have to be refined. But I just want to commend the rest of the panel for all the hard work. This was really a good job in moving us forward. Thank you.
And if I may too, I want to pick up on something the vice mayor said, because it triggered a thought that I was supposed to mention earlier, which is, as I had mentioned, there were a lot of ideas that were out on the table that had to get, vet it through to get to these. A lot of those were really good ideas. And so one of the ideas that some on the panel have thrown forward as well, that I think we would look at potentially as we go forward with kind of that second group of funding, is, is it appropriate to identify a certain amount of funding, whatever that amount is, where it's more open-ended, where you basically have, in effect, anyone, residents and otherwise, be able to make proposals for the use of some of that funding, separate and apart from the advisory panel? So that may be a kind of a phase two piece that we look at as we start to look at that remaining one-four funding that exists as well. And that was a way to kind of pick up some of those otherwise really good ideas that just, you've got to choose.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the mayor and vice mayor and our advisory panel for all of your work on this. I think Roanoke has done what we do well, and that's kind of lead the way by example with the CARES Act panel as well as this. We engage citizen input from the very beginning, and a lot of communities don't do that. And so I want to commend our mayor and vice mayor and city management, all the citizens who participated, because I think your input made a significant difference. I really appreciate the thoroughness of this report. When I think of transformation, for me, it means how we find our way to yes. And so I think that even in some of these big lifts, when we talk about the challenges upfront, I would encourage us to acknowledge those challenges, but start with the opportunities and what we might create. And I'll use the example of the grocery store. So if we start with the premise that if we don't locate a private operator, then it's probably not going to happen. What if we start with the premise that we, during COVID, had, because of the lack of food access and the barriers, I saw these community partners collaborate in a really innovative way to deliver fresh food. So our community can do it. And so I would encourage us to not start necessarily, I think we have to be realistic, because we want to sustain it. But I also think we have the energy and the human power in Roanoke to look at this from several different angles. And maybe, starting from a different place, from this place of what we've already shown, that we can respond with innovation and delivery, and we can sustain that over a long period of time with these collaborative partners. It's maybe a little bit of a philosophical shift, but, and I'm not saying I didn't hear that, but I think sometimes the way we start can send a different message to what we're looking for, and it can actually inspire more involvement and the potential for success.
Yeah, and that's why I even, I even hate mentioning phase, or, you know, Plan B on some of these. But I also think, you know, given that the urgency of the dollars and the amount of dollars, you have to, but at the same time, trying to do exactly what you said, which is, the goal here is to get that hub in place with the anchors that have been talked about.
This last week, I was, I attended a preserve campaign. It was a kickoff luncheon for Restoration Housing, who does a lot of rehab of houses in the community that lead to permanent supportive housing and, or housing nonprofits in the case of Villa Heights. And the speaker was a public historian, Dr. Wingling, from Virginia Tech. And he, as part of his public history work, explores the history of redlining in our communities. And while he was here, he toured some of the parts of the city where, in Roanoke, where redlining existed, and maybe the impact of that still does to a certain degree. And he was asked, wouldn't it be great if you could just invest a million dollars here? And he said, yeah, it would be great, but if the policies underlying that work prevent it from happening from the beginning, it's not worth making the investment. So my question is that as we go through this process, and I recognize that, you know, our Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board is really honing in on this.
We are.
Which is fantastic, and we've got to alongside, that we make sure that this transformative work is not hindered by policies that need to be changed.
Yeah, I think, inside the report, one of the other things that the panel acknowledged is, there is an opportunity in a couple of ways to leverage even as significant as they are, these investments. One of those is to continue to pursue other federal dollars that are out there as a part of the American Rescue Plan Act that aren't coming directly to us. That's one way. You can potentially take some of these dollars and leverage them for those opportunities. The other is to do exactly what you just said, which is look for policy levers as well that can further. And the affordable accessible housing is a perfect example. So, for example, alongside a three or four million dollar investment, if we also do some of, some reform associated with the zoning code, for example, that would allow potentially accessory dwelling units in more places than they are today, now you've just suddenly leveraged even, that investment even further, because now you're actually duplicating or at least creating more of those opportunities. So those are two ways in which the panel certainly talked about ways in which you can further the objectives that are identified in these documents as well.
Thank you. And I guess the last thing I wanted to share is that I really appreciate the intersections of all of these, you know, people and places. While these are individual big lifts, the impact they can make are intersectional. And I'll give you an example. I, you know, we're, we have a lot of momentum, and I think support in our community, all of us want to see violence stop in any form. And we've got a lot of positive efforts happening, even as we see a rise in that. So I really appreciate the priority given to violence interruption. And, but I also know that as I read through each of these things, if we do all of these in a transformative way, we're going to see a reduction in violence in our community, because we're increasing opportunity. And I'm really excited about that. And the potential for that is extraordinary. So I really, I want to commend the panel and you all for really seeing that possibility and acknowledging that what we do here is going to impact what we do here, and it's going to make our city more healthy and whole. So thank you all very much.
All right. Ms. Bestin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Bob, for helping us to understand everything that went into the recommendations that are in front of us right now, really just a jumping off point in a lot of respects, I think. You know, I'm struggling a little bit not wanting to drill down too far into the weeds, but there are a couple of things I would like to ask about. Under the people section, for example, recovery investments, household financial support for rental assistance, mortgage assistance, unpaid bills, et cetera. Do we have any way of estimating at this point how much need our community has right now? And along with that, how much of the assistance that's already available through some of the previous funding that's come our way is unused to this point? And I guess also, are we doing enough outreach to make sure that both tenants, homeowners, landlords, and financial institutions know that this, I think probably the major, the lending corporations know, I'm sure. But I'm afraid there are maybe landlords who, who could be getting this money to cover the rent that's past due, and for whatever reasons, it still hasn't happened.
Yeah, I think it's, in terms of need, I'd say right now, it would be somewhat a guesstimate. But yes, I think a guesstimate does exist, that, you know, there are certainly national-level statistics, as well as state-level studies that are going on to get a sense of how many folks may be facing eviction, for example. We have a pretty good idea of utility, who's not able to pay utility bills, in part based off of, from the Water Authority, because the Water Authority has not done shut-offs for some period of time and is getting ready to turn those back on. So we can kind of get a sense of what that demand is. The second part is maybe even the more significant part of this, which is, there's a lot of funding out there right now to deal with a lot of those issues. And these, the panel wanted to be clear that these dollars should not supplant those dollars. So, you know, as significant as 64 and a half million dollars is here, there's over half a billion dollars at the state level to deal with rental and mortgage assistance, for example, and most of which still exist, most of still is available. So the idea is use, those programs should be used for those purposes. This would be identify, are there gaps? You know, maybe there are folks that, because their income is slightly higher than what the state program might, might call for, or whatever it is, trying to fill those gaps that don't have that dollar amount attached to them, and be a little bit more surgical, I think, in our approach. I just use that one as an example. But that would be true with, there are other programs that, like, maybe it's the ability to pay for the, you've fallen behind in your car loan, for example. There are no programs out there dealing with that specifically. So you may also try to hit that nuance. Instead of trying, we don't want to replicate programs that are actually better served or better delivered at the state level. Or, you know, we partner with TAP, because remember, we also have CDBG and home funds that are going to some of these efforts as well. And that's a partnership we currently have with TAP and others. So it's really going to be trying to figure out where the best place is to make those investments as we go forward.
Yeah, that's one of the issues always with a lot of these federal and state qualification requirements. If you're $1 over, you don't get cut down to 90% of what you would have got, or 75% of what you would have gotten otherwise. You get nothing. And that's never made sense to me. But I do think the outreach is important, Bob. I think we need to really think about, how do we make sure that both our citizens and our business community know what's happening?
One of the, one of the items I did not touch on in the governance section is, we've had discussions about, other communities are employing, similar to what we're doing with our bilingual outreach, they're employing what they're referring to as navigators. So these are folks from within the community that are actually employed, whose job is to sort of connect people to the programs, not just our programs, but the state programs and the federal programs, businesses to those as well. And so we're going to explore that possibility as well.
And you may, you may be going to get into this when you start talking about next steps here in a minute. But, for example, things like the, and people number four talks about food systems and food hub. Places number one talks about access to fresh, healthy food. If there are organizations or businesses or whatever out there, such as LEAP, I appreciate the comments. Unfortunately, it looked like the young man had to move on. But I appreciate his comments about that, because I do think that's one of the most important things, is to have health, fresh produce. That's just vital. How would people or organizations, I mean, do they put together a grant proposal to get some of this funding and that type of thing? And will there be a review process?
You are previewing my next steps.
Okay.
Hold on to that for a second.
I won't get ahead of you, that's what we're talking about. But I do think that's real important. And I wanted, wanted to sort of save my thanks to the end rather than the beginning of my comments, because you've mentioned a couple of times that we've got some folks here with us today. I'd like for you to get them to stand up and introduce the people that are here who served on that advisory panel.
Anyone that served on the panel, if you would want, they'll stand up. This is their test, right? So, probably, let's start with, let's start with Ms. Hale. So if y'all, we'll start with Brenda, and then we'll kind of work our way through. If you want to just introduce yourself. And if you were representing a group, identify so. If you were representing yourself, identify so.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. Brenda Hale, president of the Royal Bridge in AACP, and it was an honor to serve on this committee. We did have to work. And as we move forward, I would just like for you to still think about who and what were the people that were hurt the most. So as you triage through this, think about you have to help, help the people that was hurt the most. And then, I don't want you ever to forget about investing in the youth in this community. So we have so many things to look at. But as you triage, think about all of these things that the committee has done and advisory panel. And I know that you may not use each and every thing that was recommended. And I know that you may not use each and everything that was recommended by the advisory panel. But all I can ask you to do is just be fair and equitable to all the citizens in Roanoke City. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor.
Judy Dickerson, I'm representing people.
There you go. Thank you.
Dave Brown, a twenty-four year resident of Roanoke City, raised two boys here, representing nonprofits and child welfare.
Good afternoon. My name's Annie Harvey. And I also am a citizen of Roanoke City. And I would like to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to be on this panel. It was a wonderful experience. I'm representing myself, but I live with our children of Roanoke.
Karen Harding with the Blue Ridge Independent Living Center, representing the people with disabilities who want to remain independent in the community.
I'm Jim Sears with Southern Square. I'm always representing the Southern Square and arts and culture. When I approach this from the standpoint of not specifically representing center or any of the arts and cultural organizations, I wanted to be involved in the top part.
Well, I'm not in the best position to give a lot of applause today. Let these folks know how much we appreciate what they have done.
And I, and I know, I know for a fact that, that many of the other members are watching us right now on, online as well.
Right. Good. And, and let me just wrap up with this, if I could, and, and sort of piggyback on some of the comments that Councilmember Cobb was making. Because as I mentioned before, this really is just sort of a jumping off point. There's a lot of hard work still to be done to figure out the nuts and bolts. And there are so many people and organizations in our community that are willing to help us look at, how do we achieve the best outcomes when it comes to healthcare? How do we achieve the best outcomes when it comes to food security? And, and you know, how do we achieve the best outcomes when it comes to housing? These are different review panels, groups, or whatever, that, that I hope we can bring together to really work through the details at this point. And decide, how do we make this truly transformational? Not something that's good for what we already have and going to make some improvement, but something that gives us a new direction, a new ability, sort of raises the bar for us as a community. And, and make life better for everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just real quick. For those, like you said, we have panel members watching and residents watching. But a lot of people had questions about initiatives that they wanted, and we were not able to do them because they didn't fall into the criteria, which they had to not be something we had to sustain. Can you just briefly clarify that for our residents that are watching, so that they understand what types of projects? In case, you know, once we start delving into the nuts and bolts, as Mr. Bestbitch said, and these grant requests start coming in, they need some idea of how that is going to work.
Yeah, and, and I'll, if it's okay, I'll jump into the next steps. And I know, Mayor, you haven't had a chance. You, you get the last word as the mayor, right at the end, so.
Yeah.
I'll explain kind of next steps, because it feeds into what you said, Vice Mayor, and also what Councilmember Bestbitch was, was talking about. So, obviously, throughout this, we have benefited not only from the involvement of the advisory panel members, many of whom represent some of the very groups you're talking about, but also from those groups. And we have a lot of people that do a lot of great work within this community. The expectation is that these initiatives, these investments will be made in partnership with those, or in collaboration with those partners. So, in some instances, there are a few projects that I think would be, but very few, that would actually be city delivered. So, let me use the recreation center, for example. Obviously, it's a city recreation center. The consultants that we used for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan actually just concluded an outreach effort about all of our recreation centers, engaging with the community to find out what they would prefer to be in these rec centers. That's a project that we would likely, as a city, lead, and we would do so in partnership with the surrounding, in the surrounding neighborhoods and the users of that, that rec center. So, that's one way, very few, but a few of these initiatives would be delivered, direct city involvement. The other way they would be is, much like we do with CARES, where there would be a direct partnership with a specific provider. So, if you remember in CARES Act, for example, we provided direct funding to each of the three low to no cost healthcare clinics. So, Bradley, New Horizons, and then the clinic there at the Rescue Mission. That's another way we could deliver some of these. One of our partners is already out there doing the work that's identified in here. We simply fund their efforts. And we did this all through an MOU that has contractual obligations, record keeping requirements, outcome tracking, all of those kinds of things. That's another way we could deliver these. There are a few of these that will be a combination of those. I use the, the housing one, the affordable housing. There may be a piece, I mentioned the land bank. They're our partners. There, you all have established the land bank to be your partner. So, you may direct fund a piece of this housing initiative to the land bank. And then the other piece may be either a consortium of existing providers that we direct fund. Or, we could do some kind of what amounts to kind of an RFP to say, form a coalition and make the proposal that responds to these pieces. Now, they'd be relatively quick turnaround, because we're trying to get money out there to do these projects. But that may be another way that we, we would make the choices to do those. And then yet another way that we'll do some of these, again, similar to the CARES Act, and I'll use small business grants, for example, is we can't actually provide funding directly to private businesses. What we did last time is we actually provided funding to our EDA. And the EDA put out the call for proposals, not proposals, for grant applications, and they awarded those dollars. Could very well likely do something like that again. We also use our arts commission to actually make decisions regarding funding to arts and culture groups, may do something like that again. So, that's another way that we could deliver. The other thing, as I mentioned, is this is, as, as significant as sixty-four and a half million is, remember, this is a multi-trillion dollar overall package. So, there are funding sources all over at the state and federal level. We will also be using some of those same partnerships to actually pursue other federal funding or other state funding as it becomes available. So, some of those projects, Vice Mayor, that you had identified that maybe didn't make this cut, might make it into one of those. I'll use an example. There was a, at a public hearing, there was a presentation regarding additional lab space that is needed, shared lab space needed in the innovation corridor to continue to grow our bio, bio, biomedical research and healthcare component. That is, we've already requested use of state ARPA funding for that, but there may be other avenues that we actually pursue. So, that's a project that didn't get selected, it was eligible, but didn't get selected out of this round. We'll be pursuing other funds to try to do that. There are some projects that were proposed that aren't actually aligned with the act. And those obviously just can't get funded, because we've got to maintain consistency. But I'd say most of the ideas that came up are fundable. We just need to see if there's another source of revenue that's out there to actually pursue those opportunities. And again, some of them, they'll be able to make applications when these projects get, or when these initiatives get formulated. So, from a next stand, next step standpoint, that's the next step, is we need to go in, we'll start with the, we'll kind of do this in tandem. We'll start with those immediate recovery things, so that we can start figuring out the mechanism to get those dollars out as quickly as we can. And we'll start identifying each of the resiliency investments, what's the framework look like associated with that? Is that a direct funded? Is it a hybrid? Is it city led? And then we'll start formulating it. We may be calling upon some of the folks that are on the advisory panel to assist in that effort. Because again, they bring some other, other hands to the table as we work our way through, through that as well. So, so that was the, that was the last piece of this, was really the next steps. And that is, for us, once we know you all are comfortable with these recommendations, that allows us to actually immediately begin that next, those next steps to be able to get these funds out on the street and start, starting to work.
All right. Well, thank you. Rob, and let me just say, and without being redundant, and that's sometimes what you have to be when you're the last to have. But let me thank you all again. And Bob, thank you for your facilitating all of the, the meetings that we've had. And, and thank you all for coming to out, being a part of that. And let me just say that there were thoughts and ideas about things that will make us transformational. And I think that's important. And I also hear a lot about what Ms. Hale, Brenda mentioned today regarding equity. And as we do that, because we now have an Equity and Empowerment Committee, and everything we do, we want to make sure that we're looking at equity, regardless of what it is. And also, I like the thinking outside the box that I heard with the advisory panel. And I think as we talk about transformation, personally, I'm saying, let's not limit ourselves to what we do. I think regionally, we could do some big things here, if we can get together. That's, that's, that's a task within itself, but we could make some things, we talk about transformational. Let's look at things, not as they were, but as they can be. And think about situations that things have changed. Our community has changed. People that lived in areas don't live in those areas anymore. Let's, we're going to keep all of that. So, we have a challenge before us, but we want to make sure that we're putting together this and doing what you as citizens and advisory board have asked us to do. So, thank you. We've heard from that. And I, I'm just pleased, to me, that's a strong democracy when you have people, the public, involved. This is not us going, sitting here going in the back room and just coming up with something. It's, it's really listening to you and having you involved. So, many of you will be along with that. And Bob, thank you again for, for facilitating this and putting everything and putting this together. And so, we look forward to, to making this task work for all of us. And it's going to be a challenge. There's going to be some ups and downs and some concerns and disagreement. But we want to do what's best for Roanoke. Because I don't know if we'll have, I don't know if I'll see this opportunity again, that we'll have to make a difference. And so, again, I'm keeping all doors open in terms of what we can do, because we can do some tremendous things. And I like the thing, if we do it together, we can fix some things that needed to be fixed and even go higher, go higher with what we're doing. Thank you, Bob.
And Mayor, then I will assume, based on what I'm hearing from the council, that, you know, you concur with these recommendations and we will move to the next steps. And I think Councilmember Bestbitch said it best, the, as, as difficult as this was, the really difficult stuff lies ahead. So, look forward to that. And again, I want to thank you, Mayor, and council, for entrusting us and entrusting the, the residents that you appointed to this task. And my last thanks, of course, goes to the panel and all the work that they did as well. So, thank you all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we will receive and file this information away. All right. We're going to go down now to other items recommended for action today. Item number one is the acceptance of the 2022 Department of Motor Vehicles Highway Safety City of Roanoke Pedestrian Safety Campaign Grant. There are two measures that I first need a motion on a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Highway Safety Grant to the city for the pedestrian safety campaign and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right. Any comments or discussions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, because there were a couple of questions from, from you all from the time that the packet was delivered to Otherwise on this one. And because this is actually the next item in a campaign, a set of campaigns. If it's all right, I'd like to have Andrea Garland come up and just give a quick, like, two-minute sort of explanation of what this is and how it relates to the other campaigns that have gone on.
All right. Come on up.
Hello. Good afternoon. So, do you want me just to kind of explain?
Yeah, kind of how this fits in with the other campaigns and when you think that this might kick off.
Yes. So, the, the DMV Highway Safety Grant is an annual grant that we have used to, used for pedestrian safety campaigns. So, just to come up with a message that we, you know, we want to deliver to the public with a specific call to action related to safety, pedestrian safety. Our first effort came in 2019. Our campaign was focused on the crosswalk compliance. We wanted to bring attention to that thing at the end of the intersection where people cross the street. You know, through our efforts, we, you know, we inform the public that it is the law to stop for pedestrians at crosswalks. Pedestrians do have the right of way at crosswalks, and that also a law in Virginia, every corner is a crosswalk. So, that was our focus of our campaign. Our campaign had to pivot to, you know, lots of virtual and just kind of outside the box efforts, because we delivered the campaign during the pandemic. But nonetheless, was successful, was well received by the community. We continued this effort. So, again, so now we just see this as an annual thing we do. We continue to apply for this grant. Our second, our second grant, we wanted to talk more about speed, the issue of speed. And we kind of correlate this with what the citizens, what we hear at our office, you know, we, our citizens call us. And this is things we hear over and over and over again. So, speed in the, in the area, I mean, in the region, in the city, is, is a subject that is in everybody's minds, a speed, speed in neighborhood streets. So, we wanted to tackle that subject, again, through, you know, community involvement, the use of yard signs, the use of art. We have, you know, we found a canvas on our, on our city streets, our intersections, those signal boxes that we have just sitting there, connecting all the power and the lights that tell you when to go. So, now that is our canvas for, for art involvement in the, for, in the campaigns. So, our third campaign, or our third year in a row, and this is kind of like how our, our department has seen this vision. But, you know, that there's, there's multiple layers to this. We want to continue to ensure there's two messages, that every corner is a crosswalk and that not, like, the no need to speed campaign, but concentrated on our schools. So, through this effort, we, you know, we have collaborated with multiple partners across the city that had helped us spread the word and participate in our activities. And one of them has been Roanoke City Schools. And so, we want to take this next grant to work with them on a campaign that, again, emphasizes the message of safety and at crosswalks, on neighborhood streets, on, on our school zones, but directly to the audience. So, when you do these campaigns, you're always looking about your audience, who you want to target, who a specific message you want to tell them. So, this is kind of narrowing down to more specific, we started like citywide, we're going now to like a more specific audience around school zones. You wanted to know a timeline. The campaign. So, today, with the acceptance of the grant, kind of begins the ticking clock. I will drop off the package, the grant agreement to Mr. Cobb's office. Um, no, not Cobb.
You can give it to Joe, but.
Cobb's office, and he has to sign it. And once he signs it, I'll send it to DMV, the DMV office, and they sign it. And when it is signed, then we actually have a three-year contract with our current consultant. So, it will, it will initiate the grant a little sooner, because we can kind of go ahead and start the, the process of scoping the, the vision for this, for this campaign. And connecting to, like you know, in this case, connecting with our primary partner, which will be Roanoke City Schools, to come up with, again, with our message, our materials, our, our efforts, our outreach efforts. We have had really great success on our outreach efforts on these campaigns with, you know, over thousands of people taking our surveys and participating in our, in our projects.
All right.
Thank you, Andrea.
Questions?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. All right. Any further comments or questions, members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, are you ready to call a little?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bestbitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
A second. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation for a pedestrian safety campaign, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021 and the 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion by members of council, question? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call a little.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number two is the acceptance of the Virginia Department Item number two is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles 2022 Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Alcohol Grant. Uh, there's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Department of Motor Vehicles Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Alcohol Grant, authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, members of council, any question, any discussion? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. We have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the United States Department of Transportation through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for an alcohol enforcement traffic safety grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you.
Item number three is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles 2022 Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Occupant Protection Grant. Uh, there's a resolution. Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Department of Motor Vehicles Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Occupant Protection Grant and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
Any question, discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please, uh, read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for Occupant Protection Traffic Safety Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Men, excuse me, members of council, you have any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you.
Item number four is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicle 2022 Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Speed Grant. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
We had so many at that time, I don't know which one to pick. Who moved?
I moved.
Okay. And seconded by Trish.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
Yes. A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Department of Motor Vehicles Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Speed Grant and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, is there any discussion among members of council, question?
Mr. Mayor, there, there was a question that, that I received, um, with this, uh, I just, if it's okay, I'll give you a very quick snapshot of how this actually gets implemented. This, similar to the one that Andrea mentioned, is something we apply for each year. And what, the, the way in which the police department determines, because this really pays for overtime for speed enforcement, and what they do is ultimately look at crash data that comes in off of our dispatch system, and they, um, plot that out on our GIS, out on our maps, looking for the areas that have the highest number of, um, crashes, particularly in intersections that are speed-related. Then what they'll do is they narrow that down to the top three or four, and then they start deploying resources at those priority intersections or in the streets leading up to those intersections. And they re, uh, they revisit that every roughly thirty to sixty days. And they're also looking to see, was there any measurable difference from, say, that intersection that time this year, under enforcement versus one previously, not under the same kind of enforcement? So that's how they, that's how they sort of assign the overtime with those projects, is based off of that previous years or a couple of years' worth of crash data coming off of the, um, the, of the, off of the, um, dispatch system, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion, question? All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you.
There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph, please?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for a speed enforcement traffic safety grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021 through 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you.
Item number five is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicle 2022 Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Grant. There's a resolution. Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Department of Motor Vehicles Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Pedestrian Bicycle Grant and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, is there any discussion among members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes.
There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for a pedestrian and bicycle traffic safety grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion among members of council, or Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Yes, I would like to know how is this going to be enforced?
This is somewhat similar in that they look for areas where there have been known issues or incidents, and so it's targeted. It's not gonna be, um, something that is just open-ended. It's kind of similar to all these other ones, where we've got certain areas that we focus in on for speed, certain areas that we focus in on, um, for seat belt enforcement or alcohol enforcement. Same thing. If there is an area we know that have had issues, either a, um, a bicycle accident or, um, something else, we would focus in on those areas initially. It's not a really large grant, so there's not a lot of time associated with it. And it, it really is somewhat paired with the work that we just talked about on those other campaigns to kind of raise awareness as well. But it's really focused in on those known problem areas.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, following up on, uh, Councilmember Sanchez Jones. Uh, will this be in the same areas where you have the bicycle lanes? Is this, where this will apply?
It could be anywhere, but most likely it's gonna be that. So, for example, where we've got bicycle lanes, and let's say, I don't know, you've got consistent parking in the bicycle lanes, or, you know, you know that vehicles, maybe there's been incidents where vehicles have actually, um, driven in the bicycle lanes consistently, and that's caused problems. That's where those enforcements, it could occur anywhere, because we also, um, have areas that, where you're supposed to be sharing the lane with bicyclists. And, of course, the state law just changed to require much more separation between vehicles and bicycles. So it could also involve those. But I, usually, it's gonna start around the bike lanes, um, areas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, let me call a roll, please.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes.
There's a budget ordinance.
Budget, budget ordinance.
Move the budget. Move the budget.
Second.
That was the budget.
Okay, that's my fault, I'm sorry. Got a little behind on this. All right, we're done, item number six then. The acceptance of the shuttered venue operators grant from the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance to provide support to live venue operators in response to the impact of COVID-19. There's a resolution. Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the shuttered venue operators grant from the United States Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, any discussion among council?
Yeah, if I could, oh, sorry, I was gonna, I, I was simply going to maybe answer your question and explain a little bit of what this is, because it's a little unusual, um, for us to get any kind of funding from the Small Business Development Group as well. But the reason for this is, um, this is one of the programs that has come out of the federal, um, aid programs for, um, COVID response. And, uh, obviously, it is for, as it says, shuttered venues. So any kind of live entertainment venue, public or private in this case, that was closed as a result of COVID, and certainly the Berlin Civic Center was for a, an extended period of time, we actually could host, really nothing other than vaccine clinics, um, in those facilities. And obviously, that resulted in us furloughing essentially all of the employees minus just this very small collection of folks to keep the, the building heated and lit, um, and so on, as well as obviously significant amount of lost revenue associated with it. So this, um, the reason it's coming through the Small Business Administration Office is because that's who Congress tasked with, um, actually implementing the program. So, um, it's, again, unusual for us to get assistance from the Small Business Administration, but it's because that grant program's being managed by them. In our case, um, it's a little over 1.2 million dollars that we're qualifying for. And, of course, as you all know, um, the Berlin Center operates as an enterprise fund, meaning ticket sales and so on pay as much of the bill as it can. However, the Civic Center's case, unlike parking operations, we actually subsidize that. So this 1.2 million helps us offset the subsidy that we actually would otherwise be paying for, um, the operation of the Civic Center. Hopefully, that answered the, the question, so.
Um, it did, most of it. I do have one question.
Sure.
I'm just thinking about the activity of the Berlin Center. I know we're, we're still kind of in that COVID. Then, I know there's been shows, but is there still plan? How's the activity, is this, is increasing a little bit, or is it decreasing?
It is increasing, but it is still limited, um, limited probably mainly by, um, by entertainers and whether or not they're comfortable actually coming here and under what circumstances they're willing to do so. You know, we will be starting, hockey will be starting up again, which we missed the entire season last time, um, as well. So it, it, it's beginning, um, and, and really, that's true with any of our live entertainment venues. You think of the Jefferson Center and, and some of the others are just now starting to kind of recover back into their season. So, um, it, it's on its way back, but it's still, you know, we still anticipate it'll be a couple more years before you see it fully functioning the way it was prior.
Okay, and these funds are specifically for the Berlin Center?
Correct, correct. There are other venues that could, and I believe did, apply for these funds, and our community could do so on, on their own as well.
Okay, thank you.
While we're in this discussion phase of it, were we able to retain many of the employees that were furloughed off from, from the Berlin Center?
Yes, some, some, not all. So their furlough, you know, we were, again, we had, at one point, we were down probably to less than half a dozen, um, employees, actually, at the center. Everyone else had been furloughed, because, again, there was no activity. And many of those, because the furlough went on for over a year, um, many of those, and we, and we carried, we didn't lay them off, and the reason we didn't is we wanted to be able to reclaim them. And so therefore, we were actually providing some benefits still during that period of time. But many of them found, understandably, employment in other, in other areas, and so were not able to come back. Quite a few, though, have actually returned, um, back into the place. We're not fully, um, we're not at full staff yet, because the, the amount of activities we're having don't justify it yet. But, again, I think within a year, we'll be back at that point.
Okay, thank you. The hockey team is coming back, that's, okay.
Yep, yeah, they, they intend on playing a full season, um, so that, that will be good news for us.
All right, any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes.
All right, we have a budget ordinance. Move the budget. Second. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Economic Aid to Hard-Hit Businesses, Nonprofits, and Venues Act amended by the American Rescue Plan Act, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you.
Item number seven is the authorization to submit an application to the Virginia Department of Transportation for funding of the FY 2027 and FY 2028 Revenue Sharing Program for construction or improvement of the city's infrastructure system. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution supporting an application and authorizing the city manager to submit such application to the Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Program in the, the amount of $5 million for FY 2027 and $5 million for FY 2028 in the amount of $5 million for FY 2027 and $5 million for FY 2028 for certain projects, and authorizing the city manager to take certain actions in connection with such projects.
All right, is there any discussion?
Yeah, and sorry to jump in on this one again as well, but this requires a little bit, a little bit of explanation, and really, also, I think requires putting a fine point on a really important part of this, which is, you'll note that this is a request for FY 27 and 28, a long way out. The significance of that is, for a variety of reasons, the, and this is our revenue sharing, so this is where we receive for a project 50% of the cost of that project coming from VDOT and their funding, and in effect, we're not going to have access to those dollars until this timeframe for a variety of reasons, and so we're making those requests, just as we have in the past, but it is noteworthy that there's going to be a period of time where we will not be able to participate in the same level of revenue sharing as we might otherwise have been able to do so. That is in part due to a reduction in revenues that they experienced because of COVID, less people driving, less money coming in through the gas tax and others, as well as increase in expenditures. I'm hoping, and this is just my hope, this is why something like the federal infrastructure bill becomes so important, because it may be a way to make up for some of the revenues that we're not going to be able to receive that we otherwise may have. It's important to request these dollars, it's just as important to note that these are ways off.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bespinch has a question.
Mr. Bespinch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since I rotated off of the TPO and the Regional Commission, I know a lot of that funding was to support the plan to improve I-81 through the entire quarter. Do you know whether that's still?
And that still is, so there is still a significant amount of funding going into that, into that project. Part of the reason why you're seeing these dates pushed out is in part to ensure that more of the money can go into those, into those projects.
I just wanted to point that out, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, even though it's not good for us in terms of our local streets and roads, it does benefit us as we travel up and down 81 to get those improvements as quickly as possible.
Yes, sir, thank you. There's a major hurdle in Washington right now. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bespinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Item number eight is the authorization to submit an application to the Virginia Department of Transportation for FY 2023 Transportation Alternatives Program funding for pedestrian improvements between Hawthorne Avenue and Woodbury Street Northwest. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution supporting an application and authorizing the city manager to submit an application to the Virginia Department of Transportation for FY 23 Transportation Alternatives Program funds for pedestrian improvements along the west side of Williamson Road Northwest between Hawthorne Avenue Northwest and Woodbury Street Northwest, Roanoke, Virginia, and authorizing the city manager to take certain actions in connection with such projects.
All right, is there any discussion?
I just have one question.
All right.
Mr. Collins, do you know how long it normally takes before we know if we're approved of that funding?
I do not know that. Dwayne, do you know, is there a timeframe attached with that?
In about six months, we should know.
So, six, six months. I'll hold them to it.
Oh, okay, good, I mean, does it look like, I mean, because that area really does need it, I'm just hoping that that, that it will come into fruition, I'm just, so hopefully.
Usually, I mean, we do fairly well, because there's conversations ahead of time about these applications and stuff, but, and I will note, he said about six months, so.
Well, yeah, that stretch is where I walk, so that's a personal concern.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Bespinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. So this time, I am pleased to recognize as city manager for any comments that he'd have.
I've already spoken enough today, so no additional comments, so, thank you.
He says he's already spoken enough today, Mr. Mayor, I think he's done.
Nothing more.
For today.
Item B1 is the approval of a memorandum of understanding in connection with the FY 2022 and FY 2023 Ironman 70.3 Triathlon Event. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Is that second?
Yes, that is the call.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding among the City of Roanoke Rural Triathlon Corporation, Roanoke Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau, doing business as a visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, the Counties of Roanoke and Bodatot, and the Town of Benton, governing the terms, conditions, and obligations among such parties for the Corillian Clinic Ironman 70.3 Triathlon to be held throughout the Roanoke Valley on June 5, 2022, and June 4, 2023, in cooperation with Corillian Clinic, the main sponsor of the event.
All right, is there any discussion? Councilman Carr?
Thank you, Mayor, this is really exciting for us, especially after the delay of it after the first year, so I just wanted to thank again the original visionary and all the partners who've made this possible, and I'm curious, Bob, do we have information yet on the economic impact of this event from this year?
There was, VBR put out how many folks participated in it, and I think that included some of the, at least the direct economic impact. I can see if we can get a copy of that from them, because I know they reported out to the board, at least the executive committee, what that was, so can certainly see about getting that.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be helpful, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, any further discussions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Bespinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Item number 8A is a report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs, and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donald Caldwell, Director of Accounting, is the spokesperson. There is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal, and private grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, are there any discussions by members of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Collins?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just, I'm grateful for this, but I wanted to point out that, you know, one of the dimensions of this and the work we've been doing on reducing incarceration recidivism is just having more programming available for inmates in the jail, and one of the aspects of the programming here is to have an educator and administrative support for an education program in the Roanoke City Jail. So, I just wanted to thank them for thinking about this in the overall scheme of increasing adult education opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I thought they already had that, they don't have, they don't have anybody in jail to?
Well, I don't know if this is a new program, but I just wanted to say that it's an important program, and if it's a continuation, then that's fantastic. It'll be funded, which is important.
Exactly, that's the important part.
Who's funding?
The state.
The state, the state.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Bespinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And that budget ordinance passes. All right, item B is a report of certain authority boards, committees, committees, and commissions which city council serves as a liaison for appointee. Anybody else have any comments to make regarding a board or committee that they serve? All right, Mr. Collins, I'll go right down the line.
All right, just a brief report from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. I think most everyone's aware that through the half-million-dollar grant from the state, we have been in a process of hiring three personnel. The first of those is hired, Christopher Roberts, who will be the new youth and gang violence prevention coordinator, he'll begin October 5. I believe that we're making progress on the two outreach employees, and hopefully, those will be concluded in the next month, and we're looking forward to that. During, I think, our October 18 meeting, we'll be bringing a full report and summary to you all regarding the mini-grants that we did this summer, and so you can hear some of the work that took place this summer and how some of that work's going to continue through some of our intervention programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins? Mr. Bespinch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind everybody as chair of the Legislative Committee that we agreed our last meeting, that we're all going to get all of our input together and get it in by the end of October, and I know that's still a few weeks away, but you know how we have a tendency to think, oh, I have plenty of time, I have plenty of time, but some of this stuff may take a little time, so I just want to remind everybody, please look at that again, I updated it after our meeting and sent it out, so please look that over, make sure it has what you think we need to have, anything that you need, you think we should revise in any way, don't hesitate to let me know, and we'll work on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bespinch, for your work on that. All right, anybody else? Okay, item number nine is unfinished business, none. Item number 10 is introduction and consideration of ordinance and resolution we have now, and item number 11 is motion and miscellaneous business from mayor or members of council. Vacancies, item B, vacancies on certain authority boards and committees, and we have none. All right, if there's no other discussion, the council will stand in recess for a closed meeting, and thereafter, we convene at 7 o'clock tonight. Thank you.